We will officially open our workshop. And Dr. DeFalco, that means you.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Ms. Reggio. So, good evening, everybody. Before we get into our second budget workshop of the budget, of this budget cycle for FY '20, Mr. Aronworth is actually going to review with all of us some of the latest state numbers that have come in. And before he goes into the details on that, I do want to share that these are very early, early numbers. And the budget cycle for FY '20 at the state level is also just starting its own process, if you will. So it's somewhat in its infancy. And so we just want to forecast that these numbers, our sense is these numbers will change as we continue to work through the winter and spring. But with all of that, I will turn it over to Mr. Aronworth, who will go through our latest numbers from the state.
Sure. Thank you. The first document that you have is a printout of our FY '20-20 preliminary cherry sheet estimates. This was printed from the Department of Local Services, from Mass Department of Revenue. It gives the initial estimates for the local aid appropriation from the governor's budget. If you take a look, our Chapter 70 funds were increased, however, pretty slightly, from $10,932 to $10,967. Our charter school tuition reimbursement did go up, however, that is actually offset by our charter school sending tuition. If you look at the bottom of the chart, there's the estimated charges. So the top portion of the chart are the receipts that we will receive, and the bottom portion are charges that get taken off of our Chapter 70 funds.
So the charter went up because we have more kids going to...
So that's something that we're actually looking into, because I believe it's a possible combination of both an increase in the number of students and also an increase in the rate that is going to the charter schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. The other number to note is our school choice receipts. While our school choice receiving tuition, I'm sorry, our school choice sending tuition went down slightly from 615 to 603, it looks like we had a dramatic decrease in our school choice receiving tuition, which is, has gone from 299,000 to 234,000.
Wow.
That, again, is a number that we're in the process of checking to make sure that the state has the appropriate count on who it is that's coming into the district. But that all said and done is actually resulting in, if you look at the bottom line, a net receipts this year from the state of a slight decrease, from $11,149 this past year to $11,69,000 this year. So approximately $80,000 decrease in support from the state. The second page that you have are revised, our revised budgets that we presented initially. We had a summary sheet that we presented in an earlier meeting that showed our level funding, our level services, and our zero-based budget. This summary sheet includes all revised numbers, which includes the, some changes to the budgets themselves. As I mentioned, those numbers that I presented were preliminary, and we're still combing through and making sure that all of the numbers are accurate. And some numbers come in, like we had a change in our Worcester County Retirement System assessment that just came in. So that's reflected in these changes. The state aid is plugged in as we expect for it to come in based on the latest...
It showed us.
Yep, the latest sheet. And everything else essentially remained the same. A difference that you'll see in this sheet versus the last sheet is on the bottom, I did put in the actual breakdown of the assessments to the towns according to each budget. The minimum local contribution numbers were posted, so those are included. And I did include the capital assessments to each town, as well as the additional funds/exclusionary costs that would need to be contributed in order to match each of the different budgets that is listed. Anyone have any questions? One of the things that's worth noting is that minimum local contribution, despite the decrease in Chapter 70 aid, or the small increase, minimum local contribution actually increased significantly for both towns. There's approximately a $200-plus thousand dollar increase in minimum local contribution to Blackstone, and approximately $100,000 increase to MLC, minimum local contribution to Millville.
And those numbers just capture the, so that middle column, the level service?
Yeah.
Is what we have currently, right now, with our programming, what it would cost next year, and then what the total contributions from each of the towns would be?
Have to be to meet that.
To meet that.
Correct.
And so, again, as we, you know, said when we opened, you know, the, we are early in this process at the state level as well. And so we know that the House and Senate will kind of push and pull on those numbers. And, you know, eventually we'll settle on a number. We are meeting with our local legislators. We met just yesterday with our representative Soder. And we're meeting with Senator Fatman next week to go through exactly what these numbers look like for Blackstone-Millville. And, you know, I am sure we have the support of both. I know we have the support definitively from Representative Soder, because we met with him yesterday. And he was very vocal about some next steps that he is going to be taking to help advocate for us. And I'm sure we'll get the same support from Senator Fatman as well, in our meeting next week. But we thought it would be really important to share with the committee, you know, as early as we could, the numbers, when we got them, and we got them all in, and we laid it all out. You know, we've tried to be as aggressive as possible in getting these numbers out to folks, so, you know, we could do that early, and communicate often about any changes. And so we will do another update at the meeting, the full school committee meeting on the 13th of February. And we'll share any changes that may happen between now and then, although I don't know there'll be many. But at least it will give us an opportunity, again, to go over what the big picture looks like. Are there any questions on any of these or thoughts?
We know. So Matt, when you, when you look at the level funding, and the, like, the total contribution from both towns, the minimum local, this is up about, like, for Blackstone, you just said about $200,000?
Mm-hmm.
And for Millville, about $100,000. Is anything, is anything else down? Like, a capital down, or?
The capital costs are actually down a little bit.
Right, okay.
So the capital costs are down because we closed the sewer bond.
We closed projects, right. So this, I mean, it's clearly going to be more to them, but it may not be that $100,000 more? I don't know.
And the Chapter, the Chapter 70 increase, was that the number where we said it was an additional, basically, $20 per student in the district?
Twenty dollars per student, that's correct.
I just wanted to clarify that for people to realize what that number really means.
It was an increase of...
But it really goes down in the end. It's a decrease. It's not a $20 per student. A $20 per student decrease, or more than that.
Well, the decrease also, you know, we have to, which we have to delve into, but, you know, part of that is also the charter piece, the charter school piece and the school choice. But to your point, you know, the overall increase in state aid was three tenths of a percent. That's how it actually shakes out. So .3% for BMR. But the increase on the towns is between 3% and 4%. So the issue that, that we have with this is, here we are, again, in a situation where, you know, the preliminary early numbers are out, and the, you know, the, at the state level, the aid increased by three tenths of a percent. But the towns are expected to increase their minimum local contribution between 3% and 4%.
When they're only allowed to raise their tax base 2.5%.
Exactly.
Do, do they come up with their estimate for regional school transportation based on last year's?
They do. They base it on numbers submitted at the, on the end-of-the-year report.
This isn't, that's going to go up? Our costs go up, and then our reimbursement goes down?
Yep. Potentially. Again, these are, these are preliminary numbers. That, the governor has said that his budget is based on about 76% reimbursement on the regional transportation. But in conversations with other, other financial administrators, they've said it seems to be like it might be less, a little less. So that number has maybe some room for fluctuation as well.
Okay.
There was a push, there was a push a couple of years ago, and I know that there are a number of senators and legislators still pushing to get regional transportation funded at 100%. So it is possible...
That's what the agreement was.
That's right.
So that's, that's one of those areas that we hope will come in higher.
Yeah.
And so I think it's also, you know, and maybe this, if there, if there aren't other questions, maybe this is a good segue into the actual workshop portion. So, you know, I think these numbers will actually come to life, so to speak, and have a little more meaning as we continue to meet with our class center managers and principals. And so tonight, with us, we have Mr. Dudik and Ms. Kurt from the middle and high schools. So if you want to come join us at the table up front. And as we did with the, as we did with the elementary school leadership last week, we're eager to hear directly from our secondary school leadership about how their budget and the additional resources or staffing positions are in direct alignment with their academic plan, and how we're going to continue to lift and lead our schools forward for all kids. So with that...
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'll start a little bit in terms of just where we, we have been sitting at the table. So getting here has definitely been a collaborative process, not only between myself and Tanya, but looking at our elementary principals, and our teachers and staff, custodial crew. We even brought in Jesse to ask us about equipment for our videography class. So it's been truly a collaborative process. And we absolutely need to think and keep in mind that our top priorities, so we're obviously looking at our students and the teachers and staff. When we went through our analysis, we kept going back to that phrase or that question of that "so what, now what" phrase, with focused areas on improving and strengthening our curriculum and resources, identifying and defining our instructional methods, and really deepening our awareness on the whole child. So, again, today, our goal is to inform and bring our communities together around this work. So with that in mind, I'm going to have Tanya begin to start the process of some of the shared materials that we're looking at, not only at the middle school, but also K-12.
So some of the things are K-12 that elementary may have already brought up, but the other things are more of a 6-12 with the middle school and the high school together. The first one was just some technology. And we were hoping, we would like to get back some of the subscription base that was able to help reinforce and extend learning based on what students are doing. We have been trying some free versions, like I mentioned last year, like Prodigy. But because they're free, they're limited in what you get from what, from that, the items. So the first one is the IXL subscription, BrainPop. And then one that is only for secondary level is the Newzella subscription. So this would be for teachers for grade six through 12. There is a free version, but with the pro version, you get to do a whole lot more with it. And with being one-to-one, six to 12, it really helps teachers to integrate that into their Google classrooms, and to be using nonfiction informational texts that you can gauge to the level of the student. So if you have a particular article, you can say which lexile you want it at, and it will, it will change the lexile of the reading, but it doesn't change what the content is. It does not even change the look. So if you looked at it, it would have the same graphic, and you wouldn't know until you started to read it, and you had them side by side, that you would see the different levels. So this way, you can differentiate for the students without them, you know, giving them the exact part that they needed.
And lexiles, that reading level, right?
Yeah, the reading level. I know the elementary talked about Fuentes and Pennell. Those go by letters. I just know my daughter needs to get to, like, K or something. So, you know, you used to have reading levels. Now mostly it goes by lexiles. And so you have a span of lexile that's expected for middle school.
The six to 12 licenses. So a teacher gets a license, not a stu, not only six students?
It's the, no, it's the...
For the teacher who's creating it, right?
It's six to 12. Yeah, it's grade six to 12. And so it's licenses for the teachers and all of the students.
Or any, so any, okay.
So that was something...
I want to speak a little more on Newzella, because you really looked into it.
Sure. So, yeah, last year was something that, that was a program that we, we looked at. And what was fascinating to me was that you have varied reading abilities in your classrooms. I even had a conversation today with a, with a teacher who was struggling and saying, "Some of my students are reading at a seventh-grade level. How am I supposed to meet that, meet those students?" And I'm immediately coming back to resources and guided reading, and looking at just leveled abilities for them in Newzella or Newzella really helps that piece. As you know, students are always comparing what they have in front of them, and, you know, what's fair and equal. And with, with Newzella, you get an article, or if it's on Google Classroom, the same format, it's the same structure, it has the same pictures, but the reading level is different. And, but it really ties in with the questions as well. So at the end of the day, they're still gaining the content, but they're just looking at leveling in a different way. The pro really helps out with, with teachers being able to have a focused approach on what students are able to do, and being able to push out materials for them, you know, moving forward.
And they give the teachers a lot more resources. So I actually used Newzella in the classroom, but they didn't have the pro version at the time. It was just the free version. So, you know, all of, I had the articles, and I could change the lexile for them. But what I did do was I had to create myself. So this gives that, and it's really MCAS-type style of deepening thinking, so you know that they're getting to the higher-order questioning that they need to be.
So I use it every single day in my classroom.
Oh, wow.
And I...
Do you see the benefit as a teacher?
I see a huge, huge benefit. And no one in the classroom has any idea they're reading anything different than anyone else. And they answer the same questions at the end of the article.
So I think that, that's going to be a big push from a tech request. I mean, I think from, you've heard it with elementary level, with the IXL piece. What's new at the high school is we've never had an IXL English program. We had IXL for math, but that was something that was cut last year. However, Special Ed was able to get a couple seats for this year. And I know personally, you know, they supplement the focused areas that are targeted within the STAR assessment approach, and using that as a way to be able to practice and gain skills needed to move forward. So IXL piece, and I'm glad someone's looking at it from a K-12 piece, not only for, you know, financials piece, but just a streamlined program that students are familiar with and teachers are familiar with. So there's that common language there.
So the other one that is combined is the virtual high school, or we call it virtual middle school, but technically the, it's only virtual high school, but they have middle school-level classes. And so this year, Mike and I have been sharing the 25 seats each semester. So we have 50 seats, but we would like the full, other 50 seats reinstated. We had 150 for the middle school level and 50 for the high school level. And Mike has even had to try to find a way to, to get, purchase a few extra seats. And I did fill all of the seats at the middle school. So, and that, that's really where you can have, where students can extend their learning, because that's really a self-directed learning online. It's not our teachers teaching them. They are fully online doing it. We get a discounted rate by our teachers teaching somebody else online, so.
And then I think the other similar requests are something that's tying in with the middle, high school, is we're looking at ELA and our math. We have curriculum resources of $7,500 each per content. And this really ties in with our curriculum revisions. So right now, we're looking at our science. Next year, we're going to be looking at ELA and math. And along with that would be some stipends for teachers, about $4,200 if we have three that are able to be a part of that and look at UBD curriculum model work there. I think from an ELA and math standpoint, once we really get into revising the curriculum, it's really thinking about what resources we need. So I know Tanya, even just today, mentioned some software that she's looking to really bring over to the middle school. And I said, "Wow, that would be great as a pilot, or for us to be able to know and understand what that is." Our teachers haven't touched it, so I'd rather have them see it before we go full commitment with that. But when we look at that intervention strategies and skills, that's something that she'll be talking about. But also, the other piece is, I think Dr. DeFalco mentioned this in a prior meeting, is when we think about our curriculum, and we think about our students, students need to see themselves in the curriculum, in what they're reading, what they're writing, what they're perceiving. And a lot of the curriculum that we have doesn't relate to them. So when we think about ELA, and, and the literature, that's something that we'll definitely have to take a look at and make sure that kids see themselves in that, because once they, they do, they're bought in. So that, that was the ELA and math requests that were similar at the middle and high.
And that kind of all feeds into the instructional coaches. So you'll see one at Mike's and one in mine, but it's really shared. One would be a humanities focus, and one would have the math and science focus. And they would be between the high school and the middle school, to help with providing curriculum support, modeling the best instruction strategies, as well as helping, besides getting the teachers resources for interventions and differentiation, but showing the teachers how exactly to do that and use those resources.
Okay, wait. So back up one second. So there'd be two total shared, or there'd be, right?
Two total shared. We just, Mike, Mike put one on his spreadsheet. I put one online.
You put one on yours, okay.
Yeah. So we have one each, but it'd be a 6-12, looking, oh, that, that would be the idea, is to look at content-specific, so...
Humanities.
Humanities, and then the STEM math-science. Which, to me, I think, when we think about priorities, having somebody that's mentoring, that's, that's looking constantly at curriculum that's in the classrooms, facilitating, helping teachers really think about the instructional practices, is, is going to really move our district forward. So I'm, I'm excited to be able to present that and, and hope for the best there.
I have two questions.
Now, or do you want to?
Yes. So there's no science on middle school. Is that because that was part of this, this year's budget? Okay. So, but it's, it's accounted for.
Yes, it is. Yeah. So we're doing, so we're doing the curriculum purchase for the district this year. And actually, just, we'll get an update from the science curriculum development team, I think, in March. And I just had a check-in yesterday with our Teachers 21 lead, Katie Clark, who's helped working, actually tomorrow, another day, with all of our teachers. And she said that they are progressing, progressing, excuse me, incredibly well. And the teachers have just been really eager, really excited, and we're staying right on track with our timeline. So we'll hear from them in March, like a full update.
And the resources for math and ELA for both of these budgets, will that be spent based on the information coming out of the Johns Hopkins curriculum look?
Yeah, that's, so, great question. So what we're doing is, so, we have built a curriculum review and renewal process and cycle for the district for each content area. So next year, ELA and math are, we're going to actually do two. We're going to do them together. So we built those numbers into our budget for the materials, because when the Johns Hopkins work is done, which will be sometime in the spring, we will get essentially a set of recommendations. And they're happy to actually come and talk to the committee, which I think would be pretty awesome. They'll share what they saw, what they heard, in terms of just patterns and trends, and share some thoughts about where to go moving forward. And so we then, starting in the summer, will actually take, or the start of the school year, end of the summer, will actually take their recommendations, take the curriculum review and renewal process that we put in place for science this year, and we'll do it for math and ELA with the Johns Hopkins recommendations. And then in the springtime of 2020, we will utilize the resources, the fiscal resources we put in the budget to purchase the materials.
So this money here?
Yeah. That money wouldn't be spent until, the math and science money wouldn't be spent until the spring.
Even this, even these...
Math and ELA.
Temperature probes and...
Math and ELA, yep.
That's something separate. That's currently what we're using.
There is science stuff in here.
For high school.
For high school, but not middle school.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
So the science would sort of take, I'm assuming, take precedence at the high school as well, to catch up from the two years that we haven't focused on science?
Yes. Do you want, Mike, do you want to speak to your science items here?
Sure. So just looking at science requests, so I'm not sure if you see that on there, but...
We have forensics textbooks.
Yes, okay. So, so just in terms of bulleted items, so forensics textbooks, we, I just put it in for $3,000. I mean, this is a semester course. That honestly was inherent, the teacher that loved that course, and really did a nice job with it, and used a lot of supplementals, and didn't need a textbook, retired. So we have a new person that's on board, that's trying to do her best, and she's using any supplemental resource as she can. But, but we think that a textbook, once we vet that out and really look at that, would be a useful source for that teacher and the students that are in there. So forensics is an elective for juniors and seniors. It's a semester-based course, but we have about 30, well, about 28 students per semester that, that go into that. The LabQuest 2, vernier-temperature probes, vernier pH sensors, those are, the LabQuest 2 is $900, temperature probe is $87, pH sensor 237. Those are all vernier probe ware that helps students be able to collect data, manipulate the data, play with the data, analyze the data. And we do, in the last couple of years, have always put in some sort of probes and software to be able to help assist students with that. Again, the goal, when we think about science, is not just to read a textbook and answer questions. It's, it's really to manipulate what's in front of them. And these probes definitely help when we think about hands-on, inquiry-based labs, and getting kids to really think on their own, and manipulate, you know, the work that's in front of them. The school subscription to Gizmo, so this is just a high school, I know it's not in the tech request, but this was a, it's a math and science, actually interactive graphing tool visualization resource that I was playing with a little bit this morning to get a better understanding of what that was. But again, I think when we look at our frameworks, and we think about where the common core is, and we're, we're looking at MCAS, students need to be able to see and manipulate and understand graphs. graphs, visuals, diagrams, and that's something that they're having difficulty with right now. And Gizmo is a nice, simple subscription that students will get and they'll be able to manipulate various elements of skills and concepts in math and science.
And that's something that goes on the Chromebook, Mike?
They could embed that, I don't know if it's like an app extension, but it's something that they can sign into.
Oh, okay.
And then teachers can go, I think a student can sign right into it and be able to manipulate some of those, but I think a teacher can actually just assign and be able to put it out there. So, you know, I was looking at an example of, it was almost like a virtual lab, but it was the simple demo that was free was looking at plant growth, looking at various or different variables and seeing what two weeks versus two months looks like when you add sugar water, salt water, Coca-Cola, whatever the case is. But it just allows kids to be able to play with the information that's at hand and be able to prove or disprove where they're going with that. So the oscilloscope, here's a pop question, anyone know what that is? No, no, I'll give, what's up?
Is it for hearing?
So I had to look it up too. But it's a piece of technology or a display that shows waveforms of electronic signals. So I think when we're looking at chemistry and physics, I think that is an expensive piece of technology for that. But again, I think what's key with our science folks, and they're all relatively new in our district, is that they're looking at what's in our labs, they're doing an inventory of what's there, which hasn't been done in quite some time, and really weeding things out and thinking about what is it that they need to help students when we think about labs. I push labs, I push inquiry, hands-on activities, and getting away from just the recall, regurgitation, and just taking, you know, simple facts from textbooks and believing everything that's in there. We need to be visualizing and looking at that. So those were some of the supplementals materials for science. So no one got that right in terms of the quiz, so.
Mr. Aaron Worth actually knew what it was.
Oh, he did?
He whispered quietly in my ear.
He's that student in class.
I was that science teacher.
But I think we're looking at, I know with the forensics textbook, that is a higher cost, but we tried to limit, and if you look in the budget, a lot of it are just lab items that every day perishable, items that teachers just need. And we're not looking to overhaul, you know, and get new textbooks, which we desperately need in biology especially, but we're looking at, you know, how our teams in the science, you know, curriculum teams look at in order to see what we truly need there.
So the final thing that we asked to share, and I believe the elementary asked the same thing, was just to increase a building substitute in each building to reduce the day-to-day subs and taking away teachers' preps to fill in. But I think Mr. Aaron Worth, he was going to run the numbers to ensure that that would be a cost-saving for us. So that's all, if there's any other questions on the shared aspect, and if not, I'll move on to just middle school.
And I'll follow with high school.
So the one thing, piece of technology that I didn't go over was a Jog-Nog subscription that eighth grade only has used in the past. We don't have it this year. It's not, it's very cost-effective, you see, it's not that much. But it really helps because when the students are taking the science MCAS, it's three years' worth of information that they have learned in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And they only take it at the end of eighth grade. So that really, that subscription really goes through every single thing that they should know from those three years. The next big purchase that I put on here was intervention materials. Since I came here last year, that's one thing that I've seen as really needed, is we are doing as much as we possibly can with interventions, but it's either teacher-created or stuff we find online that's free, which is not vetted, which is not saying, telling us that it is going to work, however we're trying. So, you know, I put two on there for the, with actual names, Vmath, I was able with some Title I funds that were freed up this year to purchase some Vmath ones that I currently have our Title I interventionists trying out. And that would be, so that, three teachers and sixty students, and I was trying to find something too that would make use of the new Chromebooks. So that Vmath is, that one for the math is mostly online, and it's only, it's made for intervention. It's not, here's a math book or math program, and here's some supplemental interventions that may help you. Language Live, it only comes in two levels. That is similar to like Scholastics Read 180, but it's much more online, it varies and can adapt for the students, and so it's small group, so teachers-directed, small group instruction while other students are doing a piece on the computer, and then you can assign exactly what the students need for that. So it's making use of the teacher and making use of the new devices. And that's really to help, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, with the elementary folks is trying to lift the bottom twenty-five percent since they are getting counted twice, but also the other students that are needing those supports.
I would also add, I think, with Vmath, that would also included high school intervention, right?
Yeah, it's a program, that's the program Mike said, I just told him about it, because I was like, yes, that does go up to high school. Because I, you know, finding real true intervention things that work and at a reasonable cost, I think is hard to find out there. So I'm really interested to find out what our math teacher thinks on how it goes. And we're, I mean, we're not, she's not just going around and looking at it, we're using it with students, so we can see, you know, we just, and it's great because she's only just started it, and we're just doing the STAR testing, so as she uses it, at the end of the year, we'll, and she usually tests as they go anyways, but we'll be able to see if it's really helping them to grow. The next request on there is some custodial requests that we had last year, and sometimes those jump up because it's a necessity. We have plenty of carpets and things, carpet cleaners are like ten years old, so eventually at some point, they're not going to work. The vacuum, as well as the floor scrubber, is the one that came with the building, but it doesn't work if it doesn't have batteries. So I wanted to highlight those because I did put them in last year and somehow they weren't.
Quite frankly, if it's not hanging by a string, we don't want to hear it.
Doesn't need a string.
Last week's presentation where the snowblowers literally held together with a piece of string.
But vacuums, they just quit. Like a hair dryer.
If they have no vacuums.
The only time you find out a hair dryer doesn't work is when you go in the morning to use it.
Yeah, I'm just kidding, I thought that was.
I think that just happened at our house and have to buy a four hundred dollar Dyson with all the dog hair around. That's another story.
So the last thing that's different between, from Mike's request and myself, is for a special educator for the essentials classroom because there is a cohort of students coming up. So, I mean, that's a necessity, that's not, that's not really an option. There is enough of the students coming up, and there's still more at the elementary level, so that teacher cannot move with them.
Could you tell us what essentials is? Or what, yeah, what is it, what is an essentials classroom?
I would, Dr. DeFalco knows, I have not seen one myself because it wasn't here last year and it's not here this year, so I don't under, I'm not fully aware of what BMR means by an essential classroom because every single school in the special ed department seems to call different things different names.
That's exactly why I don't.
It's a self-contained special education classroom, I mean, for lack of a.
Right. I don't believe that, I don't know if they're all MCAS alt, I don't, I'm not sure.
But when you say cohorts coming forward, do we have a sense of, is that two, is that five?
I was told four to five.
Four to five.
Yep.
I mean, I would also just add, I think, when we think about school choice numbers, we had between eight and ten students this summer that were on IEPs that school chose to BMR, just at the high school. So when we talked to Jill Pila-Gallarani, she was really concerned about the numbers and the staffing that we had, and that's, that's, that can fluctuate.
But is it not true that that money follows them?
Just moved into the town.
So I think some were school choice and some were moved in.
Okay.
Yeah.
School choice isn't a bad thing, right? Because the money, special ed money comes with them.
Yeah, comes.
Yes. But with that, we have to support.
We have to support.
The staff still is there, yes.
And we can, so, if the committee would like, I'd be happy to send on Friday in our update, a description of the essentials classroom and how many kids are going with that.
I guess.
Set of details on that.
I would appreciate it.
With the explanation that was given, if it's self-contained, alter not, four or five students, I guess my follow-up question would be, would there also be a need for a paraprofessional to support that program as well? Not that I'm looking to add anything extra, but that would be my obvious question.
Well, and we know that when we attempted, I don't know what it was, it didn't have that name, it was a different name, but this once before, that's where we fell short, that it didn't have additional support, just had a teacher and no other support, no counselor, no nothing, and.
Yeah, I would say, I don't know if they're with the special ed with what Jill's doing, if there's something with pairs on that one.
The committee re-adjusting where they are.
Right, I don't, I don't know if it would be just a readjustment, but I have not, I'm not, I'm not aware of any essential classroom in the district that doesn't have a pair with it.
Right.
That would be my guess as well.
Yeah.
And so we can definitely get the details on that for everybody.
It just, I mean, if we have to budget in, then that would be a, just a number that we should have.
Sure thing. I know there are state regs around how many students actually trigger the need for a paraprofessional, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think it's around seven or eight. I think you have to have one, and then you get up to twelve, and you have to have two.
Right, but I mean, just logistically speaking.
I guess we get that, but from past experience, our experience here has been that when there wasn't, and there, you know, there were two or three in the classroom is what it ended up, but if there was a crisis moment, there's nobody, there's, there's no one.
If this teacher needs to go to the ladies room during this day, who covers for her?
Right, correct. And we, as a committee, we have run into this before.
Sure, sure.
So if we're going to have a program or build a program, it needs to be a program, not just a room.
Right.
Correct.
I'm wondering, so is this a, this cohort of students are self-contained exclusively? Or do they go in, are they?
They're currently down at the elementary level, so I don't.
Are they scheduled for like enrichments and such?
Right.
So the answer would be, it depends on what the IEP team decides.
Right.
But most of the kids are included for enrichments or rotations, as we call it.
It's usually just for the core content.
And is there a goal to increase?
The inclusion?
Yeah.
So again, it depends upon the individual student's ed plan. If you're asking in general, is the idea to move kids out of a more restrictive setting into a least restrictive setting? Yes, I mean, that's ultimately what we want to do. But I would argue, we are nowhere near that right now. As we were discussing recently, even that co-teaching model piece is not in place.
Correct.
So before you can move to a more inclusive setting, you know, I think we've got to lay way more foundation than we have with that.
So the only other piece that I have is not adding any new, but it is taking some existing staff and shifting them. So currently with our enrollment for next year, we're looking at, for grade six to have six staff instead of eight. Still working to keep with the teams, what that final makeup will look at, look like we don't have exactly yet, but trying to move away, trying to move away from the seven, eight with one team of teachers doing the seventh and the eighth grade. So that would allow us to then have two seventh-grade teams with a shared history, and then eighth grade next year, it will, it's the smallest group right now in seventh grade, and they will be in eighth grade next year with one hundred and twenty-six students. So if I add a fifth person to that team, then eighth grade would be able to be a whole team as well. So that would be shifting and trying to increase the math intervention time. Right now, the interventionist is mainly two periods and then does grade six for three other, does three more periods of math. And then with going and taking and adding a fifth person to the eighth grade team, currently every single science teacher teaches a quarter of STEM. So they try to jam-pack in one quarter, everything that they're doing in the STEM. So this, the fifth teacher on the eighth grade team would be a STEM teacher that can then elongate and really work with the core science teacher for a year-long worth of STEM that could focus on physical science with the engineering piece even more in-depth, helping to integrate math, especially if when you get into the physics formulas and all the math that goes along with science at that level, and then deeper into the topics that they already do, while also helping to prepare the students for understanding what the MCAS will be asking them after three years' worth of science.
Can I just share, I want to make sure I understand this correctly, Tanya, it sounds like one of your goals in some of this reorganization is to make sure you have as pure teams as possible. So six is six, seven is seven, eight is eight.
Correct.
Nine is a history teacher.
Except for, is it one, you said one section of history?
Right, so, even though we're a middle school here, what I learned last year is that everybody looks at a lot of things like sections, like how a high school works, which is what I'm not used to, I was just always have, you know, my group of students, I never thought of particular classes. But here, we already don't really have peer teams, we didn't really have peer teams last year either, we have shifting and sharing of math and, as I had laid out last year. So the history, with the history, the staff that we have that's certified to teach history, we can still cover it without me having to ask for another history teacher back.
And so it essentially looks like some reconfiguration of grade six. Grade seven is a peer team with the exception of just one section of history.
Right.
That would be taught by a different teacher, a teacher from a different team?
Correct.
Okay, and then eighth grade is one team?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, so I think that's important to just stress because I, that's fairly different than what we have right now. And I know we've heard a lot of feedback from the community and from the committee about the splits and the seven-eighth, you know, all of that being really a challenge. And I think, you know, Tanya and her team here have worked really hard to figure out, like, how can we do this to get that middle school model back in place as, you know, as strongly as possible?
Because we had, we had two teams at each level, but we don't have the enrollment.
But you would have two teams at seven, one at eight.
Right.
Two, seven.
Yep, yep, with the exception of just that one section.
Right.
Exactly. So then I'll get closer to.
And then just to clarify, because this year we did, I moved a science teacher to, so, middle school again is very unique in that the teachers get time to plan as a team and to meet with parents during the day. So in order to ensure that that could happen with the master schedule, one science teacher this year was moved over to STEM technology. And so I think there's some confusion out there, like what's STEM and then what's the STEM technology? So it just, right now, the STEM technology is brand-new for everyone. So we're giving everyone the same thing this year, and then next year, build deeper into that group that already had something, and then the year after, those students would get something even more. So what that teacher has been focusing on is digital citizenship and really computer, really with computer science. And using free things that were out there, because we didn't have anything funds for that. But CF is first with Google, is computer science, and it comes also with Scratch, which is all out of MIT. And then we're also been, she's been using robotics and coding, and then where the students are taking these Lego robots, we do have four of them, so they work in groups, but they're using laptops to code what they needed to do to go and make a circle fluidly. So it go, and so, because some kids will try it, and you see, it goes like, it makes it, but it's not a nice fluid circle. Or it has to go and take a turn, or it's got to make its way around something. So that's what that class has been doing that we did not have before. Those were standards that were not getting covered because we did not have a class for that, so. Just wanted to clarify, just with STEM and STEM, calling it STEM technology, we're trying to, tried to find a way to name it, so.
And so every student has it for one trimester?
That one is, that one is part of the rotation choices. So students go into that through the rotation, which is Spanish, wellness, physical education, the STEM technology, and then they're still getting the other STEM with their science teachers for one. That one is for only one quarter, the STEM technology is also one quarter, but then we're going to build it each year. So everyone's getting that content right now. But the students who had her this year will not be the same next year. That one is going to focus more on circuit board programming and then VEX, which are erector sets with motors, which is kind of in between what the elementary school is doing and what high school's doing, so that when the students get to the high school, and she's hoping when they come from elementary now that they're doing that, they're going to have a lot more knowledge to be able to do this.
To do higher level.
Yeah.
I'm smiling just because everything that she's talking about helps the high school.
And I haven't told you about it yet.
And she hasn't told me about it, but every, so you'll see in the budget, we're looking at, you know, looking at VEX robotics. We're talking about computer science and programming, I'll share with you what students want and what they're interested in. But we had three teachers do a free PD workshop in the summer, housed at UMass Boston, looking at computer science, and all three. at computer science, and all three were endorsed to go teach an AP computer science course, our computer science principles, because there's two various, varied classes. And right now, we have a class, I believe of, it started off with like four, and now we're up to about 14 students that are using code.org, free platform, free PD. We didn't pay anything for it, and we have three teachers in our, in our building doing it. Which I, to me, is, is a great way, when we think about what's the need, what the students want. You know, at some point, this may be a requirement, but somebody's actually thinking ahead and saying, you can't find computer science programmers or people that are studying computer science to become teachers, so let's go and look at an English teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher, anyone that wants to learn the material to be able to go and teach it to our students. And we have our librarian, technology specialist, that is endorsed, and she is teaching AP computer science principles, which is, only helps the cause when it's, it's happening down at the middle school and being able to use, you know, looking at programming and so forth, and to be able to extend off that. So I was smiling somewhere there.
And I can just jump in, and I think one of the important pieces that we're hearing, and it's interesting, because if, if you haven't heard that from Tanya yet, and the two of you, and actually your assistant principals, they spend a lot of time together. They are in weekly PLCs.
Here.
Professional learning communities, and so what you're, what you're seeing, my sense is, you're seeing that vertical alignment, and you're seeing that true secondary focus on teaching and learning and very key aspects of that work, so, which is important to highlight.
So that's all for the middle school part? If anybody had any questions?
Good, yeah, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
High school?
Go for it.
All right. So a lot of the, the materials, the new materials were accounted for, but, so when we look at the sheet or the form that you may have on the screen, so our tech requests have already been talked about. In terms of a history, we're just looking at AP computer science professional development. Teacher wants to be able to get trained during the summer. She teaches AP World, and we found out through College Board that it's going to be a different exam, different format, so training would be important to be able to better, you know, meet the needs of our kids through that, that platform. So that to me, $460 is, is definitely worthwhile. Science requests, we, we talked about science. ELA, outside of the ELA curriculum resources, which we'll get into next year, they requested Shakespeare productions of $1,200, and I believe this is a in-school production, so you have a cast that comes in and will perform. And to me, I think that's.
Wait, back, the students will perform, or a company will come in?
A company will come in to perform, yes. So I actually tried to get a couple grants to be able to do that the last couple of years, and haven't been able to do that, and so we put that in our budget to be able to.
Would that be the cultural council?
Cultural council.
Cultural council.
Cultural council.
That deadline is done for next year, but.
So it, it, yeah, and it would be, the problem that, that the high school seems to have with the cultural council is that their timing doesn't meet the cultural council's timing, because the program has to happen in the year.
The year that you get it approved for.
And they, and when it's, it's like, October is the deadline, but you don't know what you're doing that year, so it's, it's, they've been stuck a lot.
I was gonna say, but in Millville from Maspa, we do it so for this year and next November.
Correct.
We cut it real close, and we hope that we get that check cash, you can get that reimbursement.
Correct.
But, yeah, it's the one year from December to December.
It's, it's weird timing, it's available, and I think the cultural council in Millville, it funded one of the productions for this year. But it's tough for this kind of stuff, because it's not on the right timeline.
I just know they were looking for more people to submit stuff this year.
Yeah.
Millville's cultural council.
So that to me, that experience, and we could probably, you know, tie in freshmen and sophomores into something like, I mean, our auditorium fits 600, so that, that's something that we're looking to do for next year, which is, is great, because theater arts to me is really important. And any sort of avenue to be able to live out literature or something that they're reading or experiencing in a, in a different way, I think is really important, so. In terms of math, the math curriculum resources was 7,500. They didn't ask for anything relatively new, so I didn't add anything to that. The curriculum stipends for three teachers for math and ELA, that ties in, again, with the curriculum revision for next year. Our art and technology requests, there's, there's a long list of items that they have, but I just wanted to highlight a few. The V5 Classroom Starter Kit of 6,000 and Booster Kit ties in, and so we have some VEX starter kits. So I believe there's about 10 robots that the students are able to play with from a competitive level. We do have a pit down in, in the classroom where students are able to do that. This V5 Starter Kit is the newer version of VEX, the one that we're currently using is like a 10-year model. So think about that first cellphone that you had 10 years ago, and not that that robot, it's that, you know, that old, but it, there's a, a different model, different style, and we're looking to, to really get back into that competitive robotics platform. So that's a 6,000 with the $900 kit with various parts of, you know, metals and pieces of robot. So, so I'm sorry, I'm not articulating that very well.
We get it.
I had my notes in there.
Pieces of robot is very clear to me.
It's very clear.
So in terms of Sony camcorder and 3D Canon Rebel camera, so, and your original, I didn't put the number, but those are, I think, three cameras that they're, Damien Godet, so that's, we're not looking at a $1,600 digital camera. There's about, I believe you told me they were about three or four. We, we need to replace a few that have been damaged in the last three years. Currently, we have 13 available cameras working, and when you have a class of 16, we have to share a little bit, so he's looking to do that. The Sony camcorder of $3,000 was a recommendation from Jesse Dufal, who apparently uses that camera here as well, and for productions. But it's also PBS, so we have PBS NewsHour, which I love, our kids are getting on, they're on, you know, the, the weekend editions, they're, they're giving their opinions on, you know, everything from, you know, political influences with celebrities, it was, it's great.
Does that automatically continue next year, or?
It does, yes. So as long as the teacher is willing to do it and be a part of it.
PBS will continue with.
But that's, that's something that Damien Godet does a really nice job with, and, you know, in terms of the cameras, we would like to be able to upgrade that. I mean, we are producing quality video, and if we're not using.
Because people have 4K TVs now.
4K TVs or, or middle-of-the-road equipment.
Right.
You know, this, the world wide web, we are reaching communities outside of Blackstone Valley, and I'm excited about that. So that is the camcorder for 3,000. If you are complaining about costs, see Jesse about that. So in terms of, so the X-Carve CNC machine of $2,000, what I can tell you about that is, in the valley, we've been talking a lot about a manufacturing pipeline, so in the Blackstone Valley, and thinking about how do we truly reach some of our students when they do graduate and they're not looking, going to, not looking to go to college. The manufacturing pipeline has certificate completions, and if we really delve into this a little bit more, that carve CNC machine is a piece of equipment that's necessary for students to be able to get Level 1 certification prior to graduation. So students at tech schools are able to get Level 1 certifications with the equipment that they have, and we are in line of, of being a part of a pipeline that's a non-tech school, and that piece of equipment is something that we would need. So we're forward-thinking in terms of, of that and being prepared. The Powermatic bandsaw, there's a lot of equipment in our quote wood shop that's being used more for technology and engineering and manufacturing, but I was just informed that we need to replace that piece of equipment. He's piecemealing things together, but it is a 1953 piece of equipment.
Oh my god.
Coming from, I guess, the original Blackstone High School that we're still using. So that is your tech piece. Health and wellness requests, I just, I threw in a few disc golf packs and medicine balls, exercise carts. Again, if we're looking to add learning activities and experiences for our students, we need to kind of, we need to revamp our curriculum and think about varying activity levels. So our PE and Wellness Department requested that. The custodial and maintenance requests, I do have a, a nice correction for you, the repair of the front stone wall is not $58,000, it's $5,800. So my apologies, I rechecked that, because $58,000 or $58,000 may get us a wall around the campus if we wanted to, I don't know.
Build a wall, Mike.
Build a wall. I'm only trying to repair a sidewall near the auditorium, so.
Get people in, now keep them out.
So we, we repaired the front stairwell that goes up.
I'm just waiting for someone to open the door, I walked right through.
Sorry if I opened up a can of worms there, but, but we, we did a nice job, or we had a companies that came in, stone masons that repaired the wall in the front of the building. It was literally coming apart, falling apart, and that's where we have graduation ceremony, that's the main office. Doors to the building and our side wall that's near the auditorium, going down through the handicap ramp, is coming apart, so we're looking to do that. There's a lot of building concerns that we've talked about. I haven't put that in our, in our budget, because I, I think we have different plans of, you know, what are we thinking about with our windows and our doors and our HVAC and, and everything else? There's a John Deere tractor for 60 grand and accessories.
Have an extra zero?
What's that?
That doesn't have an extra zero.
That's not an extra, I'm sorry. So that's a 60,000, that's a legitimate piece. Again, we are repairing and putting parts together for the John Deere tractor at some point, you know, do we need, need it, need it right now? But it will be essential, and it's something that we need to be aware of and think about, whether we lease or buy, or, there's something that needs to happen. And that tractor is used with the middle school and high school. Snow removal, right now, it's not in working order, so that's something that we need to look at. A vacuum.
Do they drive it down the road to get to the high, to here?
So that is, so we needed to repair it, because it did fail inspection last year, and they, because there was a lot of rusts and rot with the salt and everything else, but they were able to repair it and get an inspection sticker to get it down to the middle school. We don't have a big trailer to haul it down, so. There's a vacuum, I think it's the last of our rotation.
Mike, sorry, is this, this, so this is a brand-new one?
This is a brand-new, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, with accessories, with.
With, with, with tractor parts.
With, yes, with a, with a decent radio playing some country music, yes.
We'll see him driving it, from high school to middle school.
And so, and then the other piece is just the .5 seasonal custodian. We did cut, not a custodian, I'm sorry, a groundskeeper. I'm, I'm, mistakes in all of this, but we're, we are looking for a groundskeeper at the bottom.
Is that the same as that one?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, so that is a seasonal, yes, yes. So we're not looking for additional custodian, we are looking for a groundskeeper. Right now, we are covering, building grounds, using the custodians that we have, and a lot of times, they're doing that after hours, which means they're getting overtime. So that's something that, if we looked at the balance and, and what the costs balance or cost share is, and that's something definitely worthwhile, so.
And there's a new tenant in the high school offices that likes to keep things very tidy, so poor Mike has had to listen to me on the summertime. What are these weeds, what is this, what is that?
And I, and I say to.
That tenant can, I'm like, is the tenant cleaning for the upkeep?
If you show me where the clippers are, I will be happy to go out.
That tenant cleaned some chairs, so that tenant can clip some weeds.
I mean, I will, I will say that, that cut, I know it happens, but for, you know, a seasonal custo, a seasonal landscaper, I think is definitely worthwhile. Custodians are doing a, a good job with it. Look, I think we're ti, I mean, getting overtime pay is great, but at some point, they're going to burn out, and, you know, in particular, when we think about the spring. Deals need to get done, lines, weeds in front of the, the building, when the superintendent's walking in, on the first day of school, and it's not done.
I got stung by bees cleaning those weeds last year, just so you know.
And we did have a, a great parent group that came in and planted some bulbs and, and did some good groundwork there, but that's something to me, I think, is definitely to look at.
So the .5 custodian and groundkeeper are the same, or?
So it's the same thing.
Okay.
My apologies.
No worries.
So .5 is a groundskeeper.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm gonna do this.
And again, the front stone wall is $5,800.
Okay.
Not 58. So that is in terms of equipment. We're okay to move forward?
You're okay.
Okay, thank you. So I, I'd like to give you a vision of what I think the learning, what a learning community looks like. I think just in general bullet points, educators having time in their day to be able to collaborate, plan, talk about teaching and learning, comparing assessments and data to fully support our kids. At the high school right now, we don't have dedicated time where departments can come together and PLC. They have common prep time, but it's their prep time. I can't say this is a formal dedicated PLC time, where I'm going to throw you data and you need to do something with it. I'm going to ask you to come up with curriculum that really motivates and engages our students, you're coming up with, et cetera. We have a duty period that student, that teachers have, and that duty period is a supervisory duty, which is a in-house duty or a directed study hall. In my mind, the quote duty should be PLC, should be an opportunity, formal time, every day, looking at and talking about students, teaching and learning. That to me, I think, is what a community of learners looks like. The other piece that I'm, in terms of the vision, is providing all of our students at the high school an opportunity to be able to take a full course load of classes and electives that impact them the most, what they're interested in, what their needs are. And right now, some of our students are in a study hall. Some of them love the study hall, and it ties in with their course load that they're in, if they're taking four AP courses. I have no issues with them saying, I need a directed study hall to really catch up on work. But we do have some students that are forced into a study hall because there's no other elective that's offered, or if there is an elective, they're forced into it and don't want to take that specific course. So in terms of what that looks like, no formal time for our teachers at the high school for PLCs, and in terms of numbers, we have 207 students that are in study halls and 51 that are doing internships. I broke that down with our seniors, so there's 101 seniors out of the 207 for study hall numbers, and our internships, there's 37 seniors with 51 total students. I would like to minimize the amount of study halls that we have in our building, and to be able to provide as many opportunities in terms of sections and courses for kids that want to take certain classes. So with that in mind, I would like to propose having two additional staff, two teachers in our building, and Tanya said, you know, at high school or at the middle school, we don't talk about sections. I'm bringing up sections. I'm not really talking about right now what type of teacher I want to bring. I'm not saying I want an ELA and a history teacher, because that's what we lost last year. I'm looking at 10 sections to be able to provide electives for our students, to create some smaller classroom sizes that we may have, but also to eliminate directed study hall periods in those scenarios that students look and they say, okay, D period, what do I have for an opportunity? Oh, I took that last year, or, oh, this is something I really don't want, I'm in it, and then they don't really do anything with it, because they're just not completely interested in. That to me, I think, is, is really important, but, and at the same time, I'm also looking at, how do I get my teachers on a consistent basis to not think about individual prep, but also looking at a PLC approach and really truly analyzing data, looking at curriculum truly analyzing data, looking at curriculum maps and doing it department-wide. And two teachers ideally would be able to do that. When we think about, I know, I don't want to bounce around too much, but when we think about having an additional building sub, that will help alleviate the day-to-day subs that we have to call in for accesses. But, that additional building sub could be doing the supervisory duties. So, if we have an in-house duty that day, that person can be doing it. If we have a directed study hall that needs to be covered, but I want my four English teachers working together on something specific, they're able to do that with a building sub. So, that to me is the vision of what I'm looking for. But, yes, it will take ten sections with staff members. Just to kind of give you an idea, I did a survey of what students are looking at or what they're interested in. I did this over Christmas break, but it really ties in nicely with what Tanya's been mentioning in terms of some of these quarterly classes and rotations. Really ties into what Dr. Del Falco mentioned about, I think he had a summit workshop and talked about what, what job opportunities are there in Massachusetts? So, let me just share a few of these. So, two general questions, I had fifty-nine responses, didn't get a whole lot. People were on Christmas break, but I shared it out there. But, what area of study most interests you? And it was just top five, music and performing arts, being a, an educator or a teacher, the life sciences, computer science, programming and politics and government. So, those are things that are the areas of study that students are really interested in. In terms of courses, I listed a whole list of courses, about thirty, and asked students to give me the top three. Courses that they found that they would be really interested in, game design, video game design, computer programming, finance, business, marketing, government politics. I added the game design, computer programming together, that's one. So, government politics, culinary arts and biotechnology. So, when we think about sections, we could get in, this could be interesting and it could be a mix of exploratory electives that, that deal with any and all. Or, if we're looking at various partnerships throughout, community colleges to see what we can do. And what's great about this is this is what they're interested in, but this is what's happening in the state of Massachusetts.
Mike, can I add to that?
Yes.
You just really said something that resonated with me. And I think, you know, and I just kind of want to loop back for a second to what we talked about in the beginning and really particularly highlight the school choice and the charter school tuition numbers in terms of kids that are choosing other educational opportunities. And I think, you know, what we're hearing is yes, that alignment between the middle and high school, but you're also hearing a lot about different programs and opportunities to, absolutely a variety, that not only will keep kids here, but will bring kids here. We can't say on one hand, we have an enrollment problem, the kids are leading, leaving, families vote with their feet, but do everything the same way we've always done it. Can't do that. We're going to end up with declining enrollment year over year over year because kids are choosing other opportunities. If we want to continue to not only maintain our student enrollment and increase school choice, we need to be competitive. We have to have cutting-edge programming and opportunities for kids. And so, that families choose us. And so, I just want to share that because there is a, there is a direct impact of this work on our enrollment. And when you think about per pupil numbers, you know, you're looking between, you know, eleven and thirteen thousand dollars somewhere. I don't know the exact number is in terms of the per pupil expenditure rate, but when, you know, kids are coming into our district, they're bringing that with them. Or, when kids are staying, they're bringing that with them. So, you know, we might look at some of these numbers and I'm, you know, just looking at the high school because Mike is presenting now, and we look at these, you know, the V-five classroom starter kit and the booster kit, the Sony camera, that's not even one student. So, while, you know, people at home or, you know, might be looking at this saying, geez, that's ten thousand dollars, that's not even one kid. So, if that keeps one kid here, we've made that money back. It's an investment. Does that make sense?
It does make sense because what I was going to say after you finished, and I'll interrupt and say it now, is that we can't just add the teachers. We can't add the teachers if we don't add the stuff.
That's right.
We can't, you know, we need the robotics parts to make a robotics teacher make any sense. So, you can't have a, you know, we often, we have been this and Mike has sat in that chair for, for many years, very passionately asking for these things. And we can't continue to say, "Okay, well, you get a teacher, but hope he or she can do her best." You know, the pieces have to, it's important to have the tools as well as the individuals. And so, at some point in time, we have to truly commit to this stuff and say, "We have different programs here and we have the things, we have the labs that work to teach those things." Whether that's an oscillating fan or whatever the scope, oscilloscope.
Oscilloscope, yes.
And I, and I want to also underscore the need for, you know, doing the things that we do well and continue doing them, but change. And so, some things we do need to do different and some things we do need to add and some things we do need to think differently about in terms of how we're bringing some of these opportunities forward to our, to our teachers and to our students. We can't be afraid to embrace that change. And so, you know, one of the things, again, just to underscore what Jane said, that Tanya said, and we heard Carol say really well at the last budget workshop, Carol Brown, was, you know, "We've got the tools to kind of diagnose the issues." Right? So, the committee was really great about, you know, supporting the STAR programming and really having that in place that we can really monitor and identify student gaps and, you know, opportunities for growth and strengths. That's great, but so what now what? As Mike and Tanya said when they opened. And so, you know, we heard Tanya saying things like, "Well, you know, the teachers are pulling what they can offline and they're looking for their own kind of resources and figuring this out as they go." But, truly, they don't need to. I mean, these resources exist, they're here. And so, you know, again, I just want to underscore the fact that data is great and when we have data, it gives us a lot of information, but we have to do something with it. And we can't be afraid to. We can't be afraid to act and take calculated risks on how we're going to approach some of these challenges. So, you know, I just think that's important to underscore.
So, just the second visual I'd like to present to you. So, I know we've evolved in our guidance counseling office and department. We added an additional counselor last year and we looked at what that should, should be. So, SEL, we've talked about SEL, it's a big focal point for us.
We're going tomorrow.
We're going tomorrow to a PD day and maybe negative two out, but we'll be there. And, and it's, it's something that brings anxiety to me and I'm constantly reflecting on what we can do for our kids. So, I sent out an email to colleagues through the MSSAA group email asking principals and administrators, superintendents, what can we do in our building to better support kids when we think about mental health? And what really came back to me was something called the BRIGHT program. And it's, 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 the acronym is Bridge for Resilient Youth in Transition. So, this year, in terms of numbers, we have, we have fifteen students or fifteen cases of mental health short-term hospitalization. We've had one individual with an extended term of over fifty days. We've had three concussion medical leaves, which totals with those cases, two-hundred-and-twenty-five school days missed with those kids. So, now, we're thinking about kids that are out, short-term, long-term, they come back into our building. We have a meeting with guidance, we talk to our teachers, we try to get them back into the classrooms. When they're struggling, they walk into our guidance offices, which there are three counselors, but you have academic counseling happening, you have SEL, you have students that are coming in because they're struggling to get through the day, they want a break, they want to sit there. And we're also trying to provide a quote formal transition process for our kiddos and I think that we can do it differently. Looking at the BRIGHT program, districts have shared and principals have shared, "This is Mike, this is what you need, this is what we went through, this is how we're doing it." So, we did a couple of site visits. I stayed out in my area of Massachusetts at Waukesha because I knew that they had a BRIGHT program going on. And I just want to share what that model looks like in terms of their tiered approach and categories of students that they see, but also the model approach in terms of positions. So, they have, again, they're a larger district, but this is how they looked at their categories. Category one, the students that are in that room are the ones that have mental health, serious mental health concerns and have been hospitalized for more than two or three days. They transitioned back there. And they have increments of four to six to eight weeks to try to get them back into the general population. Category two students are those that have medical, physical surgery, concussions, injuries, and it's taking them a little bit to get back into it. And then third, if they have room in their, in their, it's one room, they have students that are not finding success in, in high school, that have severe anxiety or school phobia, that are staying home and we're finally getting them back in and transitioning them back into that general population. What that model approach looks like, and it's been, you know, Bellingham was a little different than Waukesha was and, and I'm looking at what we can do just to better help. But, they have two individuals that are in that room and it's one room housed in the building, but it's truly a transitional program to get students back in. And there's data to support that it's, that helps with students dropping out of school, it helps with getting, you know, a turnaround back into the hospital setting because they can't deal with the general population and the workload and everything else. But, let me just give you that approach. So, at Waukesha, they have a clinician who essentially just lays out the foundation to re-enroll students. So, a student goes out, they're laying out the foundation in terms of what's the timeline, who do we need to reach out to, who is the clinician, what hospital setting are they in, let's try to get them back in. Then there's support and outreach to outside counseling to where that individual is, but also looking at in the community, what outside agencies can we tie right back in so immediately when they, they're, they're back in the, in the, in the building, they're being supported. There's also follow-up plans and in-school counseling and monitoring. So, we, they would provide the in-school counseling, but they also, when the student finally transitions back into the classroom, there's monitoring that's happening. So, in case there is any areas of concern, they can tie that right back in. Waukesha has a dedicated teacher that's in the classroom as well. That person collects work, supplemental information from the other teachers and essentially is an advocate for that student. Oftentimes, students come back and there's this packet of information that's saying, "Okay, you've been out for three weeks, here's all your information and we really think about it."
Good luck.
Like, what specifically do these students need? What are the essential elements and essential projects and tasks that will get them to cover three, four, five weeks that they've missed and not do the worksheets? That's another review and regurgitated activity. So, that is something that they, they looked at. It works, they use the BRIGHT program as a way to, to model what they do, but they also get support. But, they have data to support that, that improves student outcomes, it gets kids back into the regular academic setting, but it also brings that dropout rate down.
Mike, is the clinician a certified social worker? I mean, are they, like, so they're talking to people on their level and their...
Yeah. So, at, at Bellingham, they have a school psychologist. At Waukesha, and this is the conversation, we had about a twenty-minute conversation about who is that right fit? Sometimes, we're looking at an adjustment counselor, but looking at the licensure, he was able to get, it wasn't a guidance counselor, but it was a, it was a social worker that was out in the field for a little bit, that came into the, into the school setting and I believe had a social work and adjustment counselor license to be able to work with them. But, they went through a few people to get, before they got to the right person. Some schools have a paraprofessional. So, in lieu of a teacher, they have a paraprofessional, which to me, I think, is something that we can look at as well. Again, I think there has to be somebody that has an educational background that truly can go and fight and advocate for students and say, "How do we break this information down for you? We're not going through the eighty-five-page packet that you have, we're going to break that down." But, also just have a conversation with the teacher, who's grading, who's assessing, who's monitoring, and say, truly, what is it that the student needs? And this is, to me, I think, is something that we need to definitely explore because right now, we, we don't have a formal transition program. Students are out there. I mean, I gave you the numbers and it's alarming. We're, we're in third quarter, we just started third quarter and we have two-hundred-and-twenty-five school days missed for mental health. We're not talking just social, emotional issues and concerns, but we're talking mental health. And when we get kids back in, it's overwhelming because they're sitting at a table like this and they're trying to get work done and there's a population of students that are coming in for academic advising and everything else and we don't have a dedicated room specifically to help students get back into it. And unfortunately, we had a case of a student who came back and re-entered into the hospital setting, I think, four days later. So, my thought process and the reflection that I need to do, did we do what we needed to do for that student and did he feel completely supported? That, that's a, that's a valid question on my, on my part. So, that is that BRIGHT program, program, structure that really is thinking about the trend, a formal transition place. And if we can get kids back in earlier, if we get kids to feel safe and not be pushed out into a classroom setting, I'd like to be able to explore that a little bit.
So...
Those are, those are two additional positions.
So, is there, go, go ahead.
Go ahead, you can finish.
Is there a cost for the program and then the staff or there's just a cost for however you design the staff?
It's a great question. I believe it's just staffing. I mean, they might be a minimal cost of, through the BRIGHT, the BRIGHT program, don't quote me, but it was fifteen hundred dollars just to kind of get in there and, and be set up in terms of mentoring. They come in, at Waukesha, they, they even helped them find a, a great location in the building that was non-threatening, that was easy access. They provided the supports, gave them, you know, community agencies that they could really tie into and really look at what that structure should, should be. And you may not have students in there every single day, but the work is being done and the groundwork is being done to be prepared and not put Band-Aids on, on issues or concerns and really being proactive about that. That's something that is a priority.
So, I guess my first comment is, I, it was my understanding when we hired the third guidance counselor with a dual certification, that this was sort of a piece of what he or she, and I think it's a she, is it a she?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. She was going to do. So, that's sort of one just observation piece. We have, we have, I have a program, I, we don't have a program, we have a space and staff. We call it the Flex Room at my high school, which is a fairly new thing probably the last three years. It is staffed by a special educator because in our building anyway, many of these fifteen students would be students who have documented disabilities and receive service through IEPs. So, when they are outside of the classroom, they're able to be, continue to receive special education services so you don't have compliance issues. And that teacher is indeed, like you said, Mike, responsible to kind of reach out to, you know, the general educators of that student to kind of, and they work with guidance as well, to kind of collect that, the work and, and make the plan of when you're going to start going back to regular class, that kind of stuff. So, I don't, I guess I question, do we need a program versus a clinician who can kind of wrap her head around a model?
And I guess that's why I asked what the, what's the program cost. And, and I remember, I, and I, my recollection, and so, Mike, maybe you can answer this, I thought we brought on the third person to help more of the freshman class transition.
Yes.
Well, that's what it became.
It's a dual, yeah. So, there is a dual role. So, I decided that, and data will support that, that freshmen are a needy population and the transition from middle school to high school is very difficult when we think about retention, when we think about, we think about everything. We think about dropout rate. If students can't get through freshman year... If students can't get through freshman year, the percentage skyrockets. So we needed to really support our freshmen. And the counselor that we brought in is the dedicated freshman guidance counselor and has done a tremendous, tremendous job reaching out and, and doing everything and anything that she, she can for those freshmen. But we also tied in the SEL piece. So any, anytime that there was a quote crisis, or she's the one dealing right now with the hospital, mental health aspect, along with our school psychologist, that's more geared towards a special ed, special ed and testing. But she's doing the group therapy as, as well. Have, have there been thoughts about how do we utilize that newer position? The freshman SEL counselor in this role? I mean, I think that's, that's something we need to think about. But to, to, to bring that position and do two things with, with our freshman and the SEL and that mental health aspect, quite honestly, I wasn't really thinking about the mental health. I mean, this is the first time that I'm bringing data with you or in front of you, saying, we have 225 days and 15 students that have short-term, one long-term and three concussions. I never, that wasn't a focus. And I don't know if it was something that was an immediate concern or issue before. But that is something that I think we definitely need to look at. But I just, in the, you know, I, I don't, I'm not going to say it's an ideal model at, at, at the districts that we looked at, but they're trying to do what's right. And they're trying to do what they feel is in the best interest of those kids. And it's, and in some rooms, it's working. I mean, I had somebody went, went over and said, Mike, it's, it's kind of a glorified room where kids are just hanging out and getting a break. And I don't know what's really happening and they're thinking about the impacts of that. And others are saying, this is truly phenomenal, you know, program, location. Things are happening and kids are getting back to the classroom feeling, feeling good about themselves. And that's what we want kids to do. But I'm more than open to brainstorming and thinking about that visual that I presented earlier. We have truly kids that are just in need and, and they're coming back, hoping to come back. But we don't truly have this formal transitional program or protocols in place to be able to have that happen.
And I mean, I, I will tell you that as you go forward with that process,
Yes.
continue to keep in your mind that those students, when they're in a setting such as that, whatever you call it, whatever, you know, it is better than being in a hospital. It is better than being home. And it is better than any other option that those types of students tend to face. So the, the people who don't believe in the model, you know, are, sort of have the belief that if you're not in front of your regular class teacher for that time, that it's not valuable when it's in the building. And I will tell you that that is untrue for the students that I work with that fit this, what I pictured to be the model. So I think it's a, you know, I think it's a great idea. It's just, again, I struggle with numbers. And I know every kid is worth it. It's not that part of the number. But just number of what does that person, in, in the long run, what do we foresee that person would do any other time? Because we have, you know, limited resources, as we said at the start of the meeting. But I, I think it's a great idea. I fought for it for years where I am, so.
And just two things, Mike, just a point of clarity. The, I know we referred to the Bright as a program. Is it, is it like a true program in nature or is it more of like a framework and a structure and a process? And because those, because to me, those are somewhat different. Like program has a very different connotation where you send a teacher away for two weeks and they get trained. They learn all the books and the resources and the, like, you know, that particular language. And where a structure and a framework, to me, is more of like a process. It's like a system. Not that they're mutually exclusive, but could you just, is, is it, is it more of the framework piece? Or is it more of like a program, program? Do you see what, do you know what I'm asking?
I, I do. And I will have to say, I'd have to get back to you to, to give you a concrete answer. But I, I would lean on, it's the framework and it's a model and it's the approach.
More of the structure and approach.
More of the structure.
Okay.
Because some schools will call it, this is the Bright room, and some will say, don't. It's not an SEL room. It's not the Bright room. Call it something different.
Right.
But it's, it's, but even, even in the, the description that I presented to you, at one point, it's saying it's a model. It's a school bridge program.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'll have to get back to you in terms of truly what that, yeah, but I'm leaning towards a framework.
And then just one other piece, and I just underscored on the Tammy's, you know, what, we meet at the state level with the superintendents from across, you know, Massachusetts and locally. And there's all kinds of different leadership groups and this issue comes up everywhere. It comes up absolutely everywhere. And the mental health was a focus of the Massachusetts Superintendent Association for the, for the past couple of years. And only because the issues in particular of trauma that we are seeing in our classrooms and in our schools have increased significantly. And a lot of that, you know, anecdotally is due to societal stress. And the stress on families and parents and all those other things that come along with that. And so, you know, I, I only say that to, 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 to kind of give Mike, I think, kudos for thinking forward, identifying the issue, thinking forward and saying, you know, at least what I heard you say was, look, this isn't, this issue isn't going to go away. And it isn't going to, you know, reduce in terms of some of the challenges we're going to face. So I think it's great that you have that up and running, Tammy, because that's a really important piece of the work.
And, and just to go on that also, when we're talking about the financial piece, like Mike did a great job explaining that piece. But, but this same number of students, when you can't provide access to your curriculum in this district, they become eventually your out-of-district placements at mental health hospital-type schools. You know, the Bradley schools of the world. So if you can meet their needs here by sort of having individualized programming, whether it's short-term or longer-term, in the end, you're going to save money and you're going to build a confidence level of this student in, in, in our educational, you know, community. So I think there's, there's a lot of value in it that, you know, I think some people will say, well, it's only 15 students. But they're students that matter.
And I think to that point, and they deserve to be here. They deserve to be here and we need to be serving them.
All means all.
All means all. That's right. And we need to be serving them in a very different way. So I'm glad you mentioned that.
Absolutely. Just one last piece, special ed teacher. So last year, we lost a special ed teacher. And I mentioned earlier that this year in August, we have a, an influx of either move-in, school choice students of eight to 10. I know, I believe Jill Poggiarani will, will be speaking on that, that we're looking to, to get or gain a special ed teacher back at high school.
Will this be in Jill's?
Yes. Yeah, we put them both in the school budgets, but also Jill will speak to it too.
But I just, I wanted to just make sure I brought that up. So I know it, it, it looks like I'm, I'm asking, I, I am asking for a lot. But I think there's, but I'm not just asking because I want it. I, I, I hope that I've been able to articulate that need and, and, and getting a sense in, in the experiences of, of what we're seeing. And, and, and knowing that we're trying and, and we got to do what's right for kids. That's, that's, you know, the phrase I'll stick with and, and whatever that is with our budget and, and the constraints that we have. But at least, you know, we're, we're looking to, to move forward with that. So I think that was it in terms of the new staff.
Any questions, anyone? Well, I will ask my question of both of you that since I started it last time, I'll continue it. These are your priorities. This is where you think it's important to build new and, but we all know the communities, we saw the dollars we may have available to us. How would you prioritize your priorities? What on here is like, you gotta give me this. I gotta do this.
I can, I, I can go first for middle school. Mike might take longer, so I'll go first.
We got a squall coming, so just keep that in mind.
That was like 20-minute presentation, right?
It was good, Mike. It was good.
Remember last time I had that time and I stuck to that? Somebody needs to put a clock in front of it.
You were good.
So concerns with priorities is the special education teachers, number one. I kind of have a dual number one, which is the intervention resources. To me, both of those are absolute necessary. Then the next one would be the instructional coach. To be, because that, that one person can help move every single classroom in this building, including all the high, high school.
May I just ask Tanya a question? In your past experience, did you work with instructional, the instructional coach models? Okay, just checking. I couldn't remember from.
As a teacher, I didn't have that. That, you know, that would have been nice. I know, you know, it, it happens and there's some, it happened more elementary. So the instructional coaches were brought in, but at elementary first and then would move up, so. And then the next one, the next one would be the virtual middle school seats. To really be able to extend or hire students, the students that really want to go and can take off and could be self-directed learners on their own. And the only other, you know, stipulation is custodial quest, requests may jump up to number one. Not my, not mine, but if stuff breaks, you know, you just don't have, you don't have the option.
We want to clean the floors. We got to have batteries.
But I just, I mean, the key thing for me, and it's really what I wanted la, you know, really saw highlighted last year, was just to get the intervention resources for the teachers to make their jobs easier so that they can feel good about what they're doing. They can know how to help the students. And we can use the data in the best way possible.
It's a great question. I'm pledging. I knew, you know, I'm sure that that question was going to pop up, so you're always prepared for that. But you always go back and forth and, you know, I think bodies are always important in front of kids. And, but I'll give you, I think when we think about our instructional coach or coaches, that to me, I think is really important right now because we have, we have teachers in our building that are working hard. But I think they need a, a shift in, in the focus of how they're working to provide for our kids. So as an example, I was in awe. I, I was down in, I believe it was Marlborough for a workshop and it was the math leaders workshop, so through DESI. And I'm the math leader. Imagine that. So no, I'm pretty good at math, but I, I was the math leader. And what was, what was difficult was there were, there were very few administrators in that room talking about math, specifically the skills, the competencies, where DESI is looking to go with that. How do we move forward? What skills are aligned K-12? And a lot of those, the teachers that were in that room were data specialists or math coaches. And it was, it was fascinating to hear them talk. They were, they were loving it, but their focus was all on math instruction, curriculum and content. And how do we support the teachers in our building? And I, I asked, how many, how many days are you in the classroom versus in your office or doing something else? Every day, they're in the classrooms, working with teachers. And they even, you know, we talked about co-teaching model. But one individual said, well, I co-teach sometimes. I walk in, I give her the five minutes to transition and I get right into it and help her lead instruction so that she has a better idea of how to meet kids. So when we think about instructional coaches, I think that's definitely at the top of, of, of my list. You know, trying to get teachers truly to think about teaching and learning and having that time within their school day is valuable. So when we think about the additional staff in 10 sections, it's very difficult to say that's not a priority. At the same time, when we think about mental health and, and what that program looks like, you know, if kids aren't healthy enough to be in the room, then who are we teaching? That element is, is important. I think we could look at the model and the framework and the staffing. I think that's where we could be flexible and really think about how we can do that. But lastly, I think what's really important too is, you know, what even Carol said, is that we have assessments. We have STAR testing. We have all these structures in place. But if we don't have ways to be able to help students with the resources and then the intervention pieces, then, then the, so what, now what piece is, how do we answer that question? What we have in front of us, but we don't know how to help. And we're getting teachers to scramble for resources to be able to, to guide and, and focus. So I gave you four.
I'm going to throw another one in there. I think the bandsaw sounds like a liability at this point.
Again, I, you know, at some point, yeah. But that, so Jane, that, there's four priorities for you.
And happy birthday, Mike.
Oh.
It's his birthday. This is our gift to him.
And I'm keeping my soul scope on.
Somebody promised me dinner. Waiting for that takeout pizza to get here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any, all right. Thank you.
Nice work. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Drive safe.
Thank you. How are you going to do all this? I mean, I can't, you know, last week I said, parents, give you your cardboard, but, or whatever it was. Not construction paper, what was it called?
Cardstock.
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 But, you know.
Someone might have a newer bandsaw.
Or your vernier temperature probes. Parents bringing your vernier temperature probes.
Cameras, you know, maybe.
No, I know. It's going to be. But I think, you know, I, I think one of the things that the, so far, you know, and we're halfway through the workshops. We still have, but, you know, one of the things I think we have heard, at least across our schools, is the principals and the teachers are ready. I mean, they know what they need. They know what they, you know, they know what the kids need. And Mike said, I think, really well, like, we're actually starting to build the systems and structures we need to put in place and create the space to improve the teaching and learning. Now is it, what is it, what is it we're, we're filling that space with? And so, yeah, I think, you know, we're going to have some difficult.
Resources are important. And I don't know, you know, what you take off of the, the fat packet, if you will, the stuff we're doing now to make room for some of this stuff. Because clearly, we can't, you know, add hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, we can't. So something in this has to give way to move some of this. And, and that's the hard piece that we have to.
Well, and in our preparation for all this, I mean, you know, these conversations started a month ago.
Sure. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, you know, part of when we did our reorganization, you know, we, we identified at least two pockets for at least two coaches. Because we, I mean, we heard it. We heard it from all, we heard it again in the last two sessions.
Instructional coach.
We need the coaches to help move the teaching and learning forward and to give the teachers the partnership they need to do that. And so, yeah, I mean.
And we need the time for the teachers to be together. You know, we need the PLC time. And if that means we have to add some more staff to, to do that, I don't know. I don't know. But we need them to work together. And they can't do it if we don't have the time for them to do it.
I'm sorry. Just to that, to Jane's last point with the staff at the high school, which is, is a bullet point, happens to take care of study halls, which you know, is one of my lifelong dreams.
I couldn't believe like you didn't jump over when you saw the star there of the study hall.
However, I, when, when you also then look, listened to Mike's information about what teach, what students are asking for, you know, I think the, the challenge, if you will, will be how do you find two teachers who fit your needs when you, when you look at this mix?
Culinary.
I mean, there were some, some commonalities where computer programming and game design, that might be one person. Culinary, I think, brings a whole nother. Culinary, everybody likes culinary, but the reality is you need a lot of, when we talk about material. And I remember we, we toured the culinary center.
The old home ec room.
I, I can't imagine that that's, you know, something that we can salvage, get up and running in a modern era. Expectation for cooking. But, so I think that will be Mike's challenge. Even if we can kind of get the numbers together, finding how do you work the, the wants of the students into certification and all that other, those other things? And not have a class that has six people in it. Because that's the other challenge, and, and that's the challenge I see for our district more than anything else, is that, yes, we can have these offerings, but if you have a course and you have six people who want to take it, can you run that with six kids? You know, consistently, and, and while your elementary schools have 28 kids, and I think that was an argument that was brought up last year during this time. So, that will be the challenge for us, even if we can make that work, or for Mike.
And the other piece of that, though, is to really work with this whole Blackstone Valley Consortium, if you will, to say, you know, look, we, you know, some of this doesn't make sense, but maybe, you know, we have the CNC piece, and you have the this piece, and so your students come to us for part of the day, and ours go to you for part of the day, you don't lose your tuition, we don't lose our tuition. You know, we, we, you know, kind of have a, a sharing of, of, of expertise, and so, you don't pick all six of those things, you pick three of those things, and those are the things that, that BMR does well, and then you've got the things that Uxbridge does well, and the things that, you know, whoever else is on the, the list.
And you captured, I mean, like, to the T, the conversations we're having, I mean, that's exactly how we're, that's exactly how we're looking at it.
And I think to take it a step fo, forward, and I know Jason's been meeting with, you know, commerce people and, and business people outside, you know, is there a company that could benefit from our outgoing students who have that, who, who earn that Level One certificate, in which, you know, maybe they're willing to give us a grant of X amount of dollars to buy some of this, and, and have students in turn with them as sort of the, the reward, or the benefit.
So, to that exact, so, to that exact point, we have 25 seniors that did not apply for post-secondary school, that, you know, don't have a shored-up plan yet for kind of what's next, so, we actually, I have a, a meeting tomorrow with, uh, one of the directors of the Worcester Workforce Board, and, uh, we are going to be laying out a series of, um, post-secondary certification programs that are anchored to employment. He's gonna help us with a, with a, a study in Blackstone Valley, although he already has, we were looking at him actually just yesterday, the different options that range from advanced manufacturing, uh, to healthcare and kind of everything in between, and then, uh, we are gonna be scheduling a meeting with those 25 kids, to get them linked up for their post-secondary work. And so, you know, I think, as we keep saying, college, career, college, career, my, my quick sense is that we've done the college stuff probably pretty good, you know, considering our MCAS scores are really high, the acceptance rate is strong, 75 to 80% annually, our graduating class are going to two or four-year schools, but what have we really done for that career readiness piece? And so, we're looking at some of those, you know, I think a culinary, I think at some other things along the same lines, to really help capture that group of students to make sure they're ready for career.
Great.
So that's underway.
Anyone else? So, thank you very much, we'll meet on, not till the 13th, well, some of us meet on the 12th, but.
We have, I think, is it next?
No, we have next week.
Next week?
We have next week.
Have another Wednesday?
We have, yes, is it next Wednesday?
Is it Wednesday or Tuesday?
It is Tuesday, we have
Tuesday the 5th.
Music, athletics, and special education.
Tuesday the 5th, so we meet again Tuesday the 5th.
Six, six o'clock. These are the meetings we should have dinner at.
All right, nothing else, Jesse, we're done.
Thank you.